Good afternoon and welcome to today's post agenda regarding the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. This post agenda was called at my request. I'm actually very proud of the work that has been done, given the funding of this fund, but I wanted to ensure there was opportunity for all members. I'm probably closer than many of my colleagues to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund and the work that is being done, but I wanted to have an opportunity for members to be briefed on what has been occurring over the last few years as well as have any questions they have be addressed. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Director Jones. Just so members are aware, there is a handout in front of you if you want to take a look at it that sort of also talks about all the work that has been done over the years. Also want to acknowledge that my colleagues, Councilman Wilson and Councilman Mosley are here with us today. Others are currently in their office watching, others may come in. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and Council. Thank you so much for being here today. Again, we want to start just by saying thank you, Mr. Lavelle and President Lavelle and also ex-councilperson Burgess for starting this fund. We know it's very important based on the whole George Floyd thing. And as we move forward, we just always want to remember how we got here. So we thank you for that. What I would like to do, just in the interest of time, and I know that you guys had a very busy morning, I have Chief Ragland here. I would like for us to start talking about our homicides and our raids. And also to know that certainly from our Reach team, which is in the galley, our Stop the Violence grantees are in the galley, that we've worked closely with Chief Ragland as men and women as we continue to stop violence in our city. So Chief Ragland can speak about our homicides and where we are.
Thank you. Briefly, let the record reflect, Councilman Gross and Councilman Warwick have also joined us. Chief Ragland?
So I'm here to kind of echo what Director Jones has said and, you know, support and respect the work that is done by, you know, the people underneath of him. So if we're looking at our homicides, our homicides are down 15%, but more importantly is our non-fatal shootings, they're down at 52% as of the end of October. And, you know, we, you know, some of that work is done by, you know, the men and women in blue. A lot of that work is also done in partnership with the Reach team and the Stop the Violence grantees. So I'm just here to kind of, you know, echo our support for these programs. They certainly help us tamp down the violence.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So what we would like to just do is kind of, again, you guys have also all received electronic copy of this, but we kind of use this as our guide for our conversation today. So I would like to kind of start with talking about some of our Stop the Violence grantees. So for example, I will take Zone 5, just because the councilman is in front of me. Our Safety Together Coordinator is Ms. Emily Embry. Our Reach Supervisor is Mr. Young. Our grantees in your area, because we, as our data showed that, you know, Homewood for a while has been, was one of our hottest places. So we have the majority of our grantees are from your area. AD99, One Hood Media, The Trade Institute, Youth Enrichment Services, Youth Places, Bible Center Church, Brothers and Sisters Emergency Emerging, Community Empowerment Association, Homewood Children's Village, Kings Association, Westinghouse, and so on. So we have people that are would also speak to, we have the Homewood Children's Villages here, Mr. Walter Lewis, to talk about the work and how we have spent the money for that if you so would like to hear what Mr. Lewis has to say. Mr. Lewis, sir, if you can please approach the galley.
I'll just have the record reflect, Councilman Charlin has also joined us. You would provide your name for the record and whatever remarks you have.
Okay. My name is Walter Lewis. Currently serve as the President and CEO of the Homewood Children's Village. And, you know, what I can say is in terms of the work that we do, Stop the Violence, Homewood Children's Village has been running out of school time program, so giving young people opportunities to, you know, stay off of the streets, be in positive supportive environments where they're working with adults, other young people, exposing them to programming that helps them think about violence in different ways and so that they ultimately steer clear of those pathways. There's countless other grantees, as Mr. Jones mentioned, who are also doing lots of different types of work. And I think what to me is really exciting about this opportunity and I think the results that we've seen is, you know, in our mantra is it takes a village. And so it's really the different types of efforts that are coordinated. You need those upstream things that are hopefully getting kids to not even, you know, engage in this type of behavior and to even sort of engage in school and resolve conflicts in different ways. But you also need people who are, you know, taken to the streets when things, you know, get out of hand or that are also, you know, interrupting and disrupting potential violence at that level as well. And so I think, you know, as time goes forward, you know, it's my hope that we will continue to see more of this and more deeper and more coordinated efforts. So I think we can do even more than what's been done, but it's been a pleasure to be a part of this body of work.
Thank you, sir. So we certainly can go through every zone and we have people here that represent each one of our zones that we can come up and we can talk. We can go to Zone 3 right now. We're, Councilman Charlin is our person. Our commander that we work with is Commander Abraham. Our Safety Together Coordinator is Ms. Chrissie Johnson. Our Reach Supervisor that is in the room is also Mr. Vaughn Rivers. I think we have Abiding Missions here. If you could come and...
How are you doing, Bob? Good. Nice to see you. Yeah, my name's Jordan Schonberger, Executive Director at Abiding Missions. Our programs in the Hilltop are focused on enriching and building up the youth around us in ways that create new leaders in our community, young and old, starting in kindergarten all the way up through high school. Our young people begin with the traditional after-school youth program, enriching homework time, access to other types of programs with our partner organizations. And as they get older, they find ways to give back to the community with our neighbor makers door-to-door produce wagons where our youth will go door-to-door in the community and pass out fresh produce to our neighbors from the Hilltop Urban Farm and the Mount Washington Shop and Save. And then also our teens receive job skills and end up working as tutors and mentors for the younger folks in our community. So try to find ways that we can build leaders of all ages. And we have seen students begin young and become paid staff in the future and become not just junior counselors in the program, but onto part-time and full-time staff with us as well. So try to pour into them early on and continue that so they can find some, you know, just find some ways to become productive members of society, leaders in their community, and find ways to shape the world around them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Also like before we move on, Mr. Jordan Gilliam also, if he can come up and give remarks at this time?
Hello? Yeah, Jordan Gilliam, Tech 25. We are based in the South Hilltop in District 3. We do workforce development around live event production primarily, also broadcast, the broadcast career pathways of which there are many in the city of Pittsburgh, from the professional level collegiate all the way down to local and high school in secondary education. I'd like to speak to what I think is one of the most interesting and forward-thinking things that the Stop the Violence Fund has done, and that's to diversify the types of programs that are funded. Again, like on face value, maybe an organization like Tech 25 might not make like the first amount of sense, especially when you have such amazing individuals, many of which are in this room, that work the streets, that do the street outreach teams. So as we continue to grow and as we hope that STV fund continues to be around, we look to align to be able to put supports in place for those street outreach teams. We do in-school, after-school, and summer programming that serve as primers to get people into the event technology industry, but it's also an opportunity because we get to talk to the students when they're still passionate about the fun stuff, whether that's sports, music, art, any of it. And we're able to point them to all the different career pathways that could take you into a nonprofit organization that's supplying workforce development, or it could take you into post-secondary options or straight to union work, which you guys have probably heard me say before, but it's a powerful model. And with the teen summer program that we were able to pilot this last summer, we were able to, again, around brand building and thinking about videos and social media content, having the kids shoot in a more accurate manner means that they need to do research about where they're about to go shoot. So they might have experience with a park, cool, we'll have them do the research and all of a sudden they're finding out historic information about their communities and the names of the streets and the buildings. And then you connect that to PRT and then to the other parks. So if that model could work with a smaller group in the South Hilltop of Carrick students, Brashear students, Homeless Children's Education Fund students, then that's a model that can expand. And we would be happy to take some of the wins that we've seen at Tech 25, not only expand it within our district, but also align with the other districts to be able to provide the same type of opportunities. So thank you all for the work that you do. Thank you, everybody in the audience, for the work that you do. And just consider Tech 25 a partner for everything that you all do moving forward.
Thank you, sir. So I want to move to Zone 2 now. And again, we also, after we do Zone 2, we'll take any questions that you guys may have from the council. Then I'd like to bring up our capacity building organization that work with our grantees to get them up to speed. They've been doing some sharing. Mr. Brown and his group has done an amazing group with, amazing with our grantees, getting them to understand their missions. I would like to go to Zone 2 where our commander is Commander Nova Sale. Our Safety Together Coordinator is Ms. Kayla Lewis. And the Reach Supervisor that we'll hear from Reach in a couple of minutes is Mr. Vaughn Rivers. I'd like to bring Mr. Darrell Porter up to be able to talk about the things they do in their neighborhood, and then we'll move on to Mr. Brown after that.
How you doing, Darrell Porter? I was an executive director. We've been able to properly get people from all six zones to do stuff in our programming. So we're able to reach the whole region. This past year, we were able to have 55 teams in our summer league. And, you know, you have teams from each one of your zones getting together, doing positive things, and having fun. They're getting educated because on every one of our shirts, we have a ribbon. And for the different color ribbons, it means something different. Everybody knows about pink for cancer. There are so many other things besides that that we use. And I'm just happy that we're able to work with these kids. And now I'm seeing the success that they're having after they leave our program. I think it's fabulous that you guys give us a chance to do some non-violence stuff.
Thank you, sir. Any questions so far, Council? I would like to move to Mr. Fred Brown. He's part of the Forbes Fund and he is the head of our capacity building.
Fred Brown, President and CEO of the Forbes Funds. For the past 42 years, the Forbes Funds has been providing capacity building support to the ecosystem of southwestern PA with a specific focus on Allegheny County. This particular project is near and dear to my heart. As an ex-probation officer and school teacher for about 20 years, I've buried over 50 kids from gang violence and many of the people in this room I've worked with over the past 20 to 30 years. And so I'm honored by the mayor and the council supporting this particular program. Our goal is quite specific in that we seek to increase the capacity of existing organizations so they can be more grant-worthy. We looked at how we optimize those organizations within the STV culture as well as explore ways that they might work together to reduce duplication and effort and increase effectiveness and efficiency during back-office support, reducing the burden of summer operations, sharing CFOs and things like that. These are all new processes, given the early stages of these organizations in their infancy as emerging organizations. Notwithstanding, when I think about the work, and I've been doing this work for almost 40 years, this is a compelling thing for me because if you think about the big mom-and-pop organizations, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Goodwill, those are bricks. These organizations represent the mortar. So if you think about the relationship between the bricks and the mortar, if the mortar weakens, the wall will fall. And so how we strengthen these organizations' ability to serve as the mortar, to hold the bricks together, transcends the way our community will grow. Lastly, we've did transformational leadership cohorts with this group, and we've also integrated generative AI into this group. And so we have some emerging leaders learning the impact of AI assistant, which I think is a very new and cutting-edge process for small and mid-size organizations. I can take any questions, comments, or concerns regarding our work and focus. In addition, we've invested almost up to $100,000 in additional resources to this group through our management assistance grants, our executive and residence programs, and our support through our cohorts, which is why I was excited about the opportunity.
At least one question, maybe a couple more if they come to mind. Always good to see you, Mr. Brown. Thank you for being here today. And I mean, thank you to Chief and as well Director Jones and Solomon, thank you for being here as well. My first question is, can you talk a little bit about, you know, when your capacity building work started, you know, with the grantees, what has the transformation been like, you know, from when they got into the beginning of the capacity building process? And where have, or even if you can give some examples of where organizations have grown to now to kind of, you know, exemplify, you know, the benefits of the capacity building process?
Well, I think I can give a couple of examples. One is the people I work closely with were part of the Transformational Leadership Cohort. And so we gamified leadership, looking at golf as a metaphor for complexity theory, and basically taught these emerging leaders rapid prototyping. So if you think about golf and the shots that you have to take, in that moment when you grab a club, you have to be committed to the shot. We equate that to the same thing as being in the seat as a leader. You make a decision, you stick to it, you go up to the ball, you hit the ball, it's where it's at, this where it's lying. You pick a pitching wedge or sand wedge and you make the shot. Now, what we've done is, in that class, we've also had professional coaches work with them as in the golf field. But the class was also bisected by teaching. And so we looked at, how do you hold yourself in a space as an emerging leader in the city of Pittsburgh? What are some of the challenges? And so when we talk about the growth, so we're talking about organizations that in some cases had difficulty completing grants online, putting data into grants, being able to aggregate what their impact was in the community. I would say post that, we've taught organizations how to aggregate data, how to look at their impact. We've supported and working in conjunction with this team to create a map to look at the impact of these organizations in the community at a micro, meso, and macro level. And that data will allow each of these organizations to pinpoint where they might need to put additional resources, time, and energy. So I would say, pre that, they didn't have any of that. During this process, they've created a new network. The second thing I think that's occurred is we've created a level of engagement that didn't exist before as a result of level in the playing field and giving people a set of gift skills and talents that have universal applicability. Most importantly, how can each of these organizations become more grant-worthy? So being able to pass an audit, being able to write a comprehensive proposal, being able to identify the type of grants that fit for that particular organization. And most importantly, how did you reduce the duplication of effort when going after a grant? So those are the kind of things that I can tell you. There's been anecdotal responses from leaders that have come to me, in particular, some of the leaders that are even in Reach have said, you know, our leadership model has transcended the way they think about deconstructing their work and looking at the cross-sector application of their work. For me and for the council, it's important, I want to say, with all clarity is, I'm not interested in transactional activity. So what I would like to do and what our organization does is we invest in organizations so they become more self-reliant and regenerative, how we help them diversify their revenue streams. And so we also adopted something in the past two years called EOS, the Entrepreneur Operating System. EOS is a new framework that allows nonprofits to move from being solely grant-driven to being more entrepreneurial in the mindset. Given the nature of what's going on in the country and the world, we find it incredibly important to help these organizations survive and thrive as a result of shifting the way they go after resources, see their work as supported by the sector. And what we mean by that is, a lot of times we do work in the field because it's feel-good work. But most importantly, can you do work that people would want to replicate? Can you do work that people want to collaborate with you on? And so I think to your question, the more we're able to help them dissect their work and give qualitative and quantitative outputs on their work, the easier it is for them to collaborate, raise resources, and do strategic partnerships.
Sure. And could you talk about, you know, if it exists, any potential, you know, organizations that have come through the capacity, you know, building program which you, you know, spoke to that kind of graduated out of that? And, you know, and what does that process look like and what do some of those organizations look like?
So I would look at it scaffolding and not graduation.
Okay.
All right. I think that when we're talking about, we serve organizations with $2 billion and $50,000. So the type of infrastructure that one organization has versus the other are not comparable. They're apples and oranges. And so if you think about this group, this group is at the far end of the spectrum, right? Because for most of the, the people in this room love the community and love what they do. They weren't committed to building the infrastructure for the sustainability of the organization. They was really trying to resolve social phenomenon, reduce death, get guns out of people's hands and feed people. As they've grown and as a result of the work that the cities focus on, the integration of how they function as a team requires them to adopt more professional acumen, which we feel like we've provided the framework for that. That's not an overnight process, as you know. That's a growth and trajectory process by which, as people grow and get more gift skills and talents, be able to get more money, pass an audit, do strategic partnerships, have impact. So you're talking about taking people from zero to 100 in reality, right? Some people are further on the road than others, but I can say, I'll use Tech 25 for example. Their leader came through a number of programs with us. Most recently, he recently graduated from our generative AI cohort, which was over at Nova Place a few weeks ago. While he was in this presentation, a tech company came up to him, offered him an additional opportunity for additional resources. Within 24 hours, they wrote another grant in collaboration with a professor from CMU that they didn't know prior to this program. And now in their pursuit of a technology grant that's exponentially grown out of organizations' ability to serve their community, not just in that sense, but also developing partnerships with tier-one universities like CMU. So that's one example.
And my last question is, you know, clearly you said that, you know, it's organizations of different stripes, you know, in different places. But if you could kind of ballpark the time horizon, you know, for the folks watching on TV that may have a fledgling organization, a burgeoning organization that may want to, you know, be a part, you know, of this effort, you know, what is kind of the timeline to go from zero to 100, you know, to use your terminology? Is that like a year, two years, three years?
I mean, to be honest with you, sir, it depends on the commitment of that organization and their willingness to do the work. It's heavy lifting. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you that in six months, you can get it. In six months, if you come and just are a fly on the wall, you'll learn something. If you don't apply it, it's just information, it's not knowledge. And so I think in a general sense, people can always learn something as far as being in a space, but I think we've pushed them beyond that. We've been very intentional about having them engage in activities to push their ability to look at their own work and comparison to other people's work. So I would say, within a year, you should see significant growth in the organization as far as their infrastructure, their ability to assess their impact on the sector, market analysis, and things like that. I think within that year, what the council has to take into account is, you're talking about organizations that may have written grants, and we call it WAM money in the foundation world, walking-around money. You get $50,000, there's not a lot of strings attached to that. When you start getting $150,000, $250,000, $350,000, you're talking about organizations whose infrastructure have to look dramatically different, their accountabilities have to be dramatically different. And so what we've done is created the framework for that kind of activity to take place. And over the course of time, those organizations will grow as a result of their ability to meet the needs of those opportunities that come their way.
Thank you for your time.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Because I don't want to sit here and say in six months, we can turn an organization around. We could turn an organization around in six weeks if they come every day and are committed to the work. But at the same time, let's be honest and say, if this group of people is out in the community, serving the community, they have a dichotomy between serving the community and learning new skills, which I would say has always been the impediment. I don't think there's been a lack of desire of people to learn. I think people's commitment to serving the community also has to be bridled with their ability to learn new skills that are transferable to help the community, which I think is always a challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Back to you, Chairman.
Any more questions, Mr. Brown and Forbes Fund? I would like to pivot to our Reach team.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
So again, we have our Reach team present, but I would also like to kind of couple in with our GVI person, which is Reverend Cornell Jones, and Mr. Tally Thompson also, who you guys have designated the money for our New Era 412. So I would like Mr. Rivers to come to represent Reach, and then we'll go with Reverend Cornell Jones and then Mr. Tally Thompson. And we'll still be open for questions all along the way. Thank you so very much. Oh, I didn't see Rav. Peace, Rav.
Good afternoon. Reverend Grayson, President and CEO of CARES Reach. Several years ago, a small group of us, probably five or six, burnt a midnight oil crafting what Reach Violence Prevention Team would look like. The work has exceeded our expectation and impact has been life-changing and impactful. We believe saving hundreds of lives, especially through the reduction of retaliation, our team is out every day making that impact and difference. Reach serves all six zones with almost 50 outreach workers, a management team of supervisors, a workforce development specialist, a case manager who steps in especially around a loss of a loved one and sees what a family may need next. We have a college and career counselor as well as a school coordinator. Our partnerships over the years, especially our relationship with the police team, where we've worked together on so many projects, the mayor, city, and the streets program, our team is at our community public safety monthly meetings. We are present for Light Up Night as well as Fourth of July and any other time that they ask us to come. Our outreach workers serve as credible messengers to at-risk population, particularly high school students, and we're at what we call hotspot locations every day. We are front and center when called upon, and I'm personally honored to be part of this great team. And we'll now hear from, if no questions, or questions for me, Dr. Davana Shannon, who will share our process. This is a question for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Rav.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Davana Shannon. I serve as the Reach Report Coordinator. So in that capacity, I am responsible for taking all of the information that is input into the New Era 412 app by each of our outreach workers. We utilize the app on a daily basis, if not multiple times a day, to be able to monitor age of victim, gender, place, location of violent interactions, the history of a perpetrator or victim to be able to be used in our decision-making and action planning. We use all of this information to then submit a monthly report and an annual report to demonstrate the impact that Reach has on not only each of our communities, but also on the individual outreach workers and how this work specifically influences their daily lives and their leadership development. Now, also using the system, outreach workers are able to make recommendations for what they believe might curb retaliation in other violent interactions. So they might request increased police presence, conflict mediation, home visits, it might even be a referral for employment or some other intervention that they believe that is also evidence-based that would, again, prevent retaliation and further violence. Now, at the leadership table, we take all that we're learning through our frequent conversations with outreach workers, through, again, those home visits, through conversations- they believe might curb retaliation in other violent interactions. So they might request increased police presence, conflict mediation, home visits. It might even be a referral for employment or some other intervention that they believe that is also evidence-based that would, again, prevent retaliation and further violence. Now, at the leadership table, we take all that we're learning through our frequent conversations with outreach workers, through, again, those home visits, through conversations, communications with the schools, and we meet at least three times weekly to review all the information that we have, that we are given to make action plans. Again, to inform the work that we're doing. For instance, if we see an uptick in a particular neighborhood, that will call for a more critical look at what's happening in that community. Again, that might mean that it calls for some cross-communication and integration between zones or even other agencies, which is really important to us. And so through this constant loop of action, reflection, and communication amongst our team, our partners, through that ecosystem, including the school district, we're really in a better position to sharpen our analytic skill, which is necessary to be able to perform this work with some fidelity.
Any questions about our data?
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Dr. Shannon. I would love to see the dashboard or the app that you're talking about. We've asked about it for now for a number of years, and I'm glad to see that there is some data collection and analytic systems. And we heard a little bit about that. Also, for the, I forget what we're calling them, the organizations that we're doing, the grantees. But so this is our kind of internal, like, these are our employees that are doing this data system, right? And so how long have you been collecting data that you feel kind of confident in?
So I think that's a twofold question. So the part about how long we've been collecting data and how confident we feel about the data. So I'll speak to the latter first. And I'll say that over time, taking, you know, people who are working directly with violent offenders and with the victims, and providing the training or the scaffolding to be able to identify which data are important, to be able to use the system with fidelity, to be consistent, to be clear, all of those things have taken time. Where now, I really do feel confident that what we are collecting is coming from, again, a place of, an educated place, rather than just some random information.
Right. Is the data clean? Can you, when you have counts, are you confident that it's counting what you think it's counting, et cetera?
The data, the data are clean from my perspective. Now, what I will say is that I don't have control of the system itself. And I think Tali may be speaking to using, to the design and management of the New Era 412 app. But what we can tell, we also use, and you're talking like data terminology right now, we use triangulation. So not only just the 412 app, but through conversations that we have with our team, we also collect our own notes and keep our own counts. And so we use those three methods and then kind of map that on to the City of Pittsburgh's dashboard, the crime dashboard, to kind of check to see how accurate we are.
I'm glad to hear that. I'm always like, just write it down on a piece of paper if you can't figure out where to put it in the app, you know? Like, don't, you know, forget it, or don't forget to record it. And just like, I always tell people, stick it up on a piece of paper next to your desk if you have to, and just keep track.
We always say if it's not written, it didn't happen.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So yeah, I would love to follow up and see that. And I'll be listening in to about the kind of, it's this tension, isn't it, between like, you know what information you want to capture, but is the software going to cooperate with you?
Absolutely.
And can you get it in there, and can it get back out?
Absolutely.
So I'm grateful that you're kind of, like you said, triangulating, or you've got some redundant systems. Thank you. Good. Okay, that's all. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I would also like to move to Mr. Tali Thompson, that can speak to the app a little bit more, Councilwoman.
Yes, sir.
So how y'all doing today?
Good afternoon.
I'm Mr. Thompson, the, I guess, kind of co-creator in a sense of the New Era 412 system. To be honest, to me, it's one of the most elaborate systems anywhere in the country when it comes to violence prevention work, accountability, resources. Just as we continue to attend these national conferences of violence prevention work that's happening, folks are always at awe with the way that we're all collaborated as a part of this ecosystem. And when we sit down and kind of demonstrate what's happening with the system that we have as far as New Era 412, folks actually request that we come to their city and actually give them access to the system as well. What you got to understand is that the New Era 412 system was a system that was designed with my knowledge as an outreach worker. I've been involved with this violence prevention work for over 22 years. And then I just had the pleasure of sitting down with students from CMU over a six-year process of saying, okay, as an outreach worker, what were your strengths? What were your barriers? What was always that miscommunication that funders would ask for under accountability? So I kind of had like a five-year process of sitting with these CMU students. And we continued to kind of make updates. We continued to have updates. And all of it, you know, kind of came together with just being a part of doing the work, and then also with the support of Bobby Wilson. To be honest, it couldn't have happened without Councilman Wilson actually putting legislation together that says that folks that are doing this work and receiving funding from the city had to use this system. So once we kind of got that, it put us all under the same ecosystem. And the collaboration, it just became like amazing. It's to the point right now that the outreach team, they have the ability to trigger an alert through the risk level assessment, that if a three or four happens, we feel like there's violence that has happened. And when they submit it, there's two automatic emails that goes to Public Safety Department, email goes to Cornell Jones, and actually two emails goes to the top police individuals at the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And literally, it triggers like right away. So on their end, an outreach worker can trigger an alert. But on my end, I have workers that are inside the schools, they can trigger an alert as well. And before you know it, you know, folks are moving and, let's say, coordinating efforts to make sure that we reduce whatever violence may have happened. And nowhere in the country is this level of coordination actually happening. But not only that, so when you look at the system itself, there's that public-facing view of the system that gives you all these amazing resources. But all the outreach workers and two other systems, two other outreach components from within the city, there's a program from the Hilltop called Improve that the, Corsera, because I'm bad with names, Corsera's operating. So they all have a username and login. So when you actually go into that username and login, it opens up a whole nother part of the app that the public doesn't have, you know, access to. It's kind of like when you see a duck on a pond, and he's kind of gliding in the system, but underneath his feet are kind of, so when all the outreach workers and also the workers inside the school all have their own username and login, that gives them access to all this other stuff that kind of exists within the system. And to answer your one question about data, we actually started, we have data from 2021, from the time we actually started. When the city brought me in, I was at the Health Department running their Office of Violence Prevention, and the city actually intentionally brought me in to bring in this system of accountability. So we have actually data from 2021.
Any questions to Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Always good to see you.
Always, always a pleasure.
Could you talk about, you know, where does the data live? What's this collected?
The data lives in, it lives in my system. Like, I'm the only one that kind of has access to that system. But then also, I give access to the city's data analyst, Tori. So us two are the only two that have access to that data. And then she cleans the data and does whatever she does with the data and sends it to the REACH team or whoever, you know, may have access to the system as well.
And you said you've been tracking data since 2021?
Since 2021.
Okay. And from 2021 to 2024, is there like any narrative being formed, you know, by this data story being told, that you can kind of track how the work that everyone in the ecosystem is doing?
There's folks that are interested in kind of, you know, seeing what the data, what the narrative may, you know, kind of say from 2021 to present time. That's a whole nother step that, you know, we have folks, so we actually have folks from Duquesne that want to engage in that process, where they're saying, okay, can we take a look at the risk level data? Because I have a program that I'm operating Safe Passage, and we have an MOU with Pittsburgh Public Schools, we can actually give them access to that data. Because, you know, we are sub-recipient with the City of Pittsburgh and have MOU to collect the data from Pittsburgh Public Schools. So all that comes through New Era system. So now, right now, Duquesne is lined up to actually look at that data, kind of see what that data says from the school, and see what the needs were to students that we have been serving from the Safe Passage program.
I mean, I'm sure over several years, it's a lot of data. It's a whole other, you know, it's a whole new job that could be created, you know?
Yeah, there's mediations on there. I mean, there's, you know, risk level assessments. Outreach workers on a weekly basis submit risk level assessments. Anytime that, you know, something changes within that risk, they also, you know, submit additional risk level assessments. So there's so much data within that. But what it does is, originally it allowed us to that, when outreach workers were just submitting risk level assessment, it spoke to what's called focus deterrents. So when you had that focus deterrent component, Cornell Jones, who's that middle intervener with the GVI, can say, okay, outreach is telling me this is where, you know, resources need to be, rather than the old, what's called saturation. So law enforcement used to do what's called heavier saturation. Like, if energy was built up in a certain neighborhood, they would just flood the area with police officers, do kind of what they may do. But now, you know, from the work that has this collaboration, that has Cornell Jones in the middle of it, is that outreach worker can trigger something, Cornell sees the trigger, or even they submit something there, it doesn't trigger, Cornell still has access to the point where he says, he can be talking to outreach, I mean, to the law enforcement, says, this is kind of where, you know, where you might want to be. But even to the point that you have outreach workers saying, they're requesting law enforcement's presence to prevent something from happening. That's the focus deterrent model that folks don't realize, that the work we're doing is unique than anywhere in the country, that we actually have a system that allow outreach workers to do focus deterrent, and then with other models you may have incorporated with that as well.
Thank you. My final question is kind of, you know, the macro, you know, version of my micro question to Mr. Brown. You know, my question to him was more like, you know, looking at, from an organizational standpoint, you know, what is the transformation being like? Can you, you know, being that you have somewhat of a 30,000-foot view and vast experience, you know, of, you know, working on the ground and then, you know, rising up, you know, in leadership, you know, in violence, you know, prevention work, can you talk about how the ecosystem has changed from 2021 to 2024, given the tools that you have, given the support from the Stop the Violence Fund, as well as the growth of the organizations?
Right. Man, to put it in simplest terms, when I was at One Vision One Life, and we had the actual outreach contract for the City of Pittsburgh, we was talking about $75,000. Then I had an organization myself, when One Vision went out of existence, it was $150,000. And at that time, you know, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess kept saying, we need resources to do this work. We need this collaborative. So when the resources continue, you know, they kept advocating for the resources. And as they came about, and we developed these relationships where other, you know, folks were able to get involved as well, it allowed the ecosystem to really be established to a point where now you can get to the point that an outreach worker at the finger, off of his phone, can give someone they're dealing with access that is a trust, a Stop the Violence grante. Like, literally, so there's a tab on there that has Stop the Violence grantees, and all the Stop the Violence grantees pops up at your fingertips. And now you could send it to them, and now they're able to access that organization right there from their phone or from their computer. You know what I mean? Like, that didn't exist. When I was out doing outreach, I had to kind of know what resources out there, right? I had kind of had to maybe have a flyer of that resource, right? I had to kind of maybe have a phone number, right? Then I had to maybe have a point to be able to, when I get back to the office, tell you who I sent it to, when I sent it to them, and all this other stuff. Now, with the financial resources that we ended up getting, you know, with everything that's happened under Director Jones' leadership, with coordinating all these different services, all that can happen, and technology is eliminating all those barriers, right? So it took someone to be able to quarterback the coordination of all those different efforts, but it also took resources to be able to say, this is what we're going to do, and this gives us the ability to do it. So now outreach workers in this whole ecosystem is all happening on one platform. Like, and it's just an amazing process. From when I was an outreach worker, I couldn't tell you who just got the last grant and who could help them on housing. But I had to try to. And then I needed to tell you, since you gave me the money to do the work, who I gave it to, whether they, you know, if they made the call, then you wanted me to be a case manager as well on top of that. But now with the way that we have and the resources that we have at this table, I mean, we have one of the most elaborate systems when it comes to collaborations anywhere in the country. And it's been proven, you know, to that, every time that we all, all these organizations go to these conferences, folks is at awe with the stuff that we're able to tell them that we do in the collaboration that we have.
Thank you so much. You know, we go, we go back to the beginning of time together. So I'm really, you know, I'm proud of all the work that you do.
Appreciate you, man. Appreciate you.
Yeah, I truly appreciate you. And thank you for your comments.
And Councilman Lavelle was here at $75,000, kept saying, we're going to get some.
Absolutely. No, thank you for your comments and your insight today.
Councilman Wilson?
Hold on, Tali. Okay.
You want to get up and leave?
No, I don't want to leave, Bobby. This is all right.
Thanks for being here. I just want to know where you think we need to go?
Actually, to be honest, where we need to be, like, literally, we just need the consistency to continue to exist. Like, we can't get to a point that we start to see success. We realize that we, like, our ecosystem and what we're doing here in Pittsburgh should be championed to where folks is asking us to come in and see what we did, how did we get here, you know what I mean, and what's happening. A lot of times, what happens in this space is because the organization that's considered best practices or evidence-based, it was established in 2003. So then now, when you're looking for what works, you're asking them to come into your area and kind of tell folks that know what they're doing and actually have the support to do it now, how to do things. What's happening here in Pittsburgh in violence prevention and this ecosystem and the collaboration that we have with all these organizations need to just continue to exist, but it also needs to be championed. Like, Reverend Jones created a process where outreach workers walk with law enforcement at events, at, you know, June 10 event, June 10 events, 4th of July events. That's a process that was created that doesn't exist anywhere in the country. Like, we just need to be able to have consistency, and we need to champion what it is that we're doing here in the City of Pittsburgh. And actually, we're establishing it within the region of Allegheny County, to be honest. So to be honest with you, Bobby, and you know, I keep it, you know, we talk direct, is that where we-
You can talk politics here.
Where we need to be.
You can keep it, you can like-
Where we need to be, we just need to exist. We just need to continue to exist.
So continue to exist. I appreciate you going through that. I was wondering, you know, with all, you know, with all the technology that's out there, you know, do you foresee that there has to be like some updates?
Well-
Or you're already taking care of that?
So to be honest, to speak frankly, there's a $21,000 update happening to the system as we speak right now. And that's able to happen because, you know, I got the Safe, I got the Safe Passage Grant, which is over two years, it's a $2 million grant. So within that, we wrote updates in that. And then I also have your GVI grant, which is $100,000. And I wrote updates in that as well. So as your data analyst looks at things, and she says, we need updates on these things, I have no choice but to talk to the developer team, and they make the updates. So literally, we got a $21,000 update that's going to be hot off the press. Literally, it'll be done by the first week of December. So here's the thing, is when you have a technology that students from CMU created, right, you can't say that there's this other great technology out there. You're just saying, okay, do we put the resources to update what we've created? Because there are some of the greatest coders in the country, literally. So we don't need to kind of go nowhere else. We just need to continue, you know, with technology, you need to continue to have resources to upgrade or update the technology that you have.
I'd also like to say, Councilman, our data analyst, Tori, has been a game changer for our whole ecosystem. She's been here, she's the one with Dr. Armstead and Mr. Reynolds to help get this document that you have before you. So she's been amazing in this process. So I can't go any further without giving her her props for doing what she's doing to help us with our work. Because every time I'm considering, coming from you guys, Councilwoman Gross comes to my mind as far as the data, and what are we doing with the data. So I appreciate you for that, Councilwoman. But so we're at that point, as Mr. Thompson said, but also with Tori. Yes, sir, Dr. Armstead.
Yeah, I also would just like to add to that. I think one of the things that Tali, I think, left off is that when you look at how our data analysts consolidate this work and makes the reports that really show this work is working, and that is, for example, if a young man had come in here upset, and one of the workers would pull him aside and have a conversation, they could literally take the app, send him a video about anger management and how he could reduce that anger in two minutes. And we can look at, through our data, how many times a young person has watched an anger regression video. And so then she sends us the- And so then she sends us the numbers and say, hey, you guys can push these, um, resources more because twenty one percent are, are watching this. How many are watching this? How many are recommended for this? So we know where people are being sent because of our data.
Right. Which means the work that outreach is doing is data driven. The work to some degree that law enforcement is doing, that's not law enforcement work is data driven. Cause you got Cornell is that in betweener. Um, outreach has the ability when they submit a risk level assessment to say what action they feel needs to happen to reduce the risk. So you actually got outreach workers saying there needs to be law enforcement presence on some things. Then there's sometimes they may say there needs to be conflict mediation. We have a system right now to the point that violence can happen inside the school. Something's triggered. Outreach is outside the schools before we, we even get out of the school. But then the worker inside the school, along with the outreach workers later on in the evening during the mediation. Like literally, and then it's all captured within the system. That just didn't exist, to be honest, Bobby, until you pushed to the point that we had to use these systems at the end of the day. And it's so much farther than, than Lavelle when we sat down here with seventy five thousand dollars. Like literally, so we just got to continue to exist and we got to champion what's happening here in Pittsburgh. And if you, and, and the thing is if you don't champion it, the way that the system is set up, you never have a chance to champion. You always keep saying, come in and help us with our stuff, right? And we at a point where we just had reduction in homicides. We didn't kind of have that champion that I thought would happen with that number of reduction in homicide because our, our system is one of the greatest collaborations. Anywhere in the country, meaning, and I ain't talking about just the technology system, I'm talking about the organizations that exist. It took us a minute to get there, but we literally collaborate, lean on each other, have great relationships and that's something that takes time. And we, we, we had to get through those, those tough times, but we're here now. So we are where we, where we really need to be.
I appreciate that, Tally.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for going through that. And I, I think we were, you were alluding to, um, telling the story by pointing to the.
Yes, I was just saying that.
The newsletter. Well, this is, um.
The, this, this whole, um, project has been, uh, choreographed and, and put together by our data analyst. And she's been telling, if this whole thing tells a story, uh, from the beginning, from, from the genesis with Councilman Lavelle. And ex-Councilman Burgess, all the way up to this very present time, including our homicides and how we're working together in our ecosystem.
Yeah. So what pages, um, would be directly like information we got from the, um, from the app? Or everything that you're going through, Tally? Like if we.
Well, process, the majority of the stuff, you know, comes from the app, literally. Yeah.
So like all the pie charts, basically in the backside, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I know a big part of this is, I mean, we all love to hear you talk about the work you're doing, but is to tell a story in like, uh, um. You know, in a, in a visual way. And so it's been helpful to, to, to see this and, and, and all that information. You could probably make these pie charts every day if you want.
Well, what it did was when y'all actually had positions for a data analyst, right? It gave them real data to work with, right? But then it also said, when they started working with this data, it gave them the ability to send it back outward to someone that can react on. What the story may be telling or kind of way that data needs to be, you know, needs to be pushed in a sense. And it gave someone who's sitting up in reach, who, you know, specializes in that, someone that could be able to have conversations on that level to say, okay. Now I need to talk to the supervisor and this is how we kind of need to redirect the work or this is kind of some pivots that we need to make. At the end of the day, what it does is, is that the work and the support that's been happening here and the resources that have been happening here is that it gave us a system, right? Before this, we didn't have a system and a lot of times what happened in this work is becomes the hamster in the wheel. You feel like if you're not getting the results you need from this, then that's out, something new's in. Now they got to establish continuity, establish consistency. Is that we committed to a system with the support here and now we got to a point that the system really actually worked and continue, you know. It allows us to be able to know where we need to pivot at.
I appreciate it. And, and not only, um, you know, you're able to tell a story, but also like, uh, I'm sorry, is this the newsletter? Or what are we going on? It's just like the pamphlet for the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, something for this meeting.
Yeah. Only in, uh, Stop the Violence, uh, post agenda where you get a, a key on a map. Where you look at twenty two grantees by neighborhood. It says grantees by hood. I have no, I have no further questions.
All right. Anybody have any?
Any other questions we appreciate?
Councilman Smith?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President Lavelle. And thank you all for your work. I just a few things that I have is, um. I first want to, well, first of all, I always have a lot of questions because people always hear me talk about and questioning the, um. The Stop the Violence program in general. One, because I hear from the community. I mean, I don't know about other members, but I'm actually on the streets in the community, talking to people in every neighborhood around the city. I go all the time. And I was born and raised here, so I know a lot of different people across the city. So I hear different stories and sometimes when I ask questions, it's based on the information people are saying to me. I'm trying to get answers for the public. People don't always like that. I don't care. So I'm here to ask questions. So, and I'm here to make sure that whatever we're doing is actually impacting the community in the most positive way. So I, with that said, I'm, I'm, I'm always like a critic, but it's mostly because I really want us to fund things like this through foundation funding. I want us to make sure that we get a lot, we have a lot of foundations here in the city of Pittsburgh and I wish that we would use some of those foundations to really booster, you know. Bolster this program actually and use our public dollars for the things that do make a difference, like tearing down a house, cutting weeds, paving streets, opening rec centers. So the things that we are responsible for are not a blight in the community, but a blessing for the community. So that's how I feel. And that doesn't mean I don't want you to have the money. That means I want you to have it. I want you to have more than what we can give. So for people who like to spread rumors and say things, I'm telling you right from me, what I, how I feel. But the, I do have to say that all the data, and let me just say, I'll start by saying, my brother was the dean of Carnegie Mellon Computer Science and Engineering. At, when their schools were together and then they separated the schools and he went to, um, computer, to, um, engineering. So I think he and Dan Gilman's dad and others helped to do a lot of this stuff with dead, you know, data across the city. And are, you know, reliance on computers and the things we do. But for me, it's not, it's not, that's not what matters to me. It's what I see the reach people out in the streets. When I see them in my community, when I see them working with the kids. That means the world to me and it means a lot to the community because you can tell them anything you want. They see what's happening on their streets. They don't care about what you're saying. They care about what they're seeing. They care about what they're living. And to me, I don't want a kid to have to walk down the street looking over his back to see if he's going to be shot. I want him to walk freely and feel confident that he, somebody has his back and he, they're fine. And so when I see that in our community, I see that with them. So I do want to acknowledge reach in the things that they do. Cause I was probably one of their biggest critics initially. So, and, uh, but I do see it and now that I'm seeing it, I feel good. When I hear from the community, I feel good. The one, some of the things I do want to know is high school age students, is, is this, what this is mostly directed towards or do you work with kids of all ages?
So, uh, Councilwoman, we work with, uh, students of all ages, but the majority of our resources are for our, our high school age students.
Yeah. And I know there's a real need there, but Christopher Ralph, who has the boxing program at Langley can tell you. Almost any day of the week you can pull up to Sheridan and there's probably about thirty kids. Usually they're throwing rocks or fighting with somebody or doing something they shouldn't be doing. And I just really feel like they really need some attention too. And I do pull up and when I pull up, they run to my car, not away from my car. Cause they know I'm going to feed them. They know I'm going to, you know, um, tell them to pull up their pants, pick up the trash, stop throwing rocks. They know I'm going to correct them, but they know I do it with love and they know that I care about. But they know I'm going to feed them and they know that I'm going to give them something to do. My husband and I, you know, we buy toys and do stuff to keep the kids busy. But I can't be there all the time and I really wish that there was something more geared towards that younger age too. So I just want to, because if we catch them at a younger age, they're not at the older age doing some of the things that we don't want them doing. So I really wish we would put some focus on, on that. And if there's some way we can help as a community, let us know that. I mean, cause other than me going down, maybe we can get a group of people that would do this in, in our neighborhoods. Cause it's also happening in Elliot and Townsend Park. We put a million, almost a million dollars in renovating a playground there. Within one year, every piece of equipment has been replaced and it's because there's nobody there. There's nobody there, you know, it's, it's, and I just feel like. You know, that's maybe better use for park rangers instead of walking around in a park that's empty, maybe actually spending time with the kids in the park, in a playground. So just stuff like that, there's things that I care about, but I do want to, I, I want, didn't want to let the time pass where I, I didn't acknowledge, um. The Reach Crew and, and all the amazing work they're doing. And I've actually seen Cornell Jones, um, in action himself. So I know the great work he does too. And I'll call him and yell at him about something once in a while. But he and, and, you know, Reverend Grayson. He knows that I think the world, I think the world both of them. So I know that everybody's trying and I do appreciate everybody and what you're trying to do. So if I criticize, don't take it personally. Don't take it internally. It's because I want results for the kids and, and for their families. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Comments, concerns, is Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I appreciate, um, hearing more about the software itself, but also as you point out, the kind of. The way that it's just pulling together these coordinated different sets of actors and agencies, right? And so that they, those are, that everybody's working on the same page. It's not just that they're working together in the software, that they're working, that there's a communication network, that there's a response network. I'm really, I'm really glad to hear that because that's what we were kind of talking about the idea of a few years ago. So to see that you've, you've made it, um, real. Uh, we, we appreciate that and we, we're beginning to see the results clearly. So one of the other things that I think Council, when we debated these funds that we are now, as you say, a lot more than seventy five thousand dollars. Was that support network for our youth especially, that I think Councilwoman Kell was talking about a little bit. But for myself, I'm not a social worker. So I really, really value that other people in the room are social workers and caseworkers and can really talk about. Um, things like anger management for youth and things like that. Where I, a lot of our energy and effort at council is about the other kinds of so- social systems. That are either stressors or supports for our, all of our residents and families and our kids, like housing. I've heard you mention a couple of times, um, certainly other kinds of access for household supports. Can you tell me a little bit about that? And I'm happy to follow up also because this is, there's a lot of, a lot of topics and a lot of, a lot of questions. But I, I know some of you have been at the table before when I've asked about this, kind of like, you know, we want to make sure there is a, a kind of a safety net and support systems around. These vulnerable families and yeah, so.
Directors.
You can see, you can kind of tell what I'm getting at here. So I'm going to give you a chance to answer.
Yeah. So one of the things that I will mention is that, um, if, if, if I could direct your attention to, um, our program categories page of, um, your handout. One of the things it talks about, we've divided into categories and thirty percent of, thirty-three percent of this, um, this fund is devoted to youth resilience. And that is, that's the umbrella. Of course, that's the overarching, um, theme of that particular, um, that area. But under that, it does involve, um, anger management. It does involve their ability to, um, keep yourself alive. All of those different programs have different components within that, that speak to you.
I guess I'm not thinking about training the kids to do it for themselves. I'm saying like, are we helping them get housing if they're housing insecure? Are we helping people get food if they're food insecure? Are we helping connect like their, their family? Not like, hey, seventeen year old, take care, you know, do it yourself.
So all of those, all of those, um, resources are, are on the system and then we actually, actually, um. The data analyst could tell you actually how many folks access, you know, we sent out as far as housing, you know, food, food, the whole, all the categories are there. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. I'll follow up with that too. I know I was promised to look at the system anyway. So we don't have to talk about it and take up too much other time. But, um, it'd be great. I would, I would love to see kind of how you're recording that and, um, you know, how, how the data works down. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
I think I can step away now, right? Tally.
Tally.
I think. You ain't done, brother. Nah, I sweat a lot though, but I haven't, I haven't sweated, but go on listening.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, my questions are a little bit more general. I mean, for you as well, Mr. Thompson, but you know, to the group in general. Um, so I, I mean, I do just want to say, you know, I, um. You know, so it looks like in, you know, in twenty eighteen, Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess, you know, introduced this concept, right? And this funding and, um, you know, in twenty twenty-two, right? The Gandy administration really put it into action, right? And, uh, I think I, I, I do want to commend, uh, commend the effort in that, right? Like it is, you know, this is a, the Stop the Violence funding and, um, and programming is a critical step, right? And supporting our black communities in ways that they have never been supported before. And as you're saying. It is exceptional on a national level, not just here, right? Um, so you know, just the, the, and, and I, and I like what you said about we're, we're at a place that we have to keep going, right? Like this was a huge endeavor and you know, when you are, um. Deciding what you're going to do with the city, whatever you, you, you know, you pick a thing, you pick a problem and you stick to it and you get it done, right? And it's bumpy at first and it takes some time. And so, you know, I think overall, um, when we look at these numbers, you know. Twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four homicides down thirty-three percent, non-fatal shootings down forty-two point five percent. That's remarkable.
Right.
And, um, everybody here should be incredibly proud of yourselves for the work that you've done. Really? You know, it's something, it's something, I mean, I've seen it in my district, you know, even, even just over the past years, like last, I want to say the summer before last. And they, maybe we're like, I want to say three shootings in Hazelwood. There were none this past summer. And I know it's not always a direct line, right? But nonetheless, I, I see, you know, Rick Butler is in the room, um, and you know. I've worked closely with him. I know he's in the high school doing incredible work. So. It's very tangible. It's very real. So I do want to commend everyone. Um. That said, I feel like I want to, I want to kind of present you all with some challenges, right? Just some things that I've, I've kind of observed and, and, and you feel free to, to, um, you know, respond, but the, and I'll, it's sort of like three, three points. Um, the first one is looking at these categories. So I see, you know, eight percent. Going towards sports and seven percent going toward academic support. So the thirty-nine percent, which is the largest one, which is youth resilience. I, I think I understand you just explained a bit what that, what that means about the youth resilience, but. I would really want to, I mean, the academic support is, is critical. So I wanted to ask if there is any, and I know that you can't do all things, right? It's a limited amount of funding. It's a bit, but, but, um, if, if you can speak at all to. So because I mean, that academic support, especially at the younger ages. Which I'm assuming after school programming and whatnot, if, if anyone can speak to, to that or plans for the future.
Well, one of the things that we've seen is that, um, folks who are in that space have applied, um, but fewer people have. Um, some of them are independent. For example, um, Youth Places has a powerful program, um, that address, um, after school with. A focus of black girls. Um, they didn't apply. So some of those folks who are, who are, you know, who are shining and beacon, you know, beacon of light in that, in that space, having applied for the money. But we did know that the folks who have, we were certainly happy to see that there were those who were interested in the academic supports. Um, in the way that they, you know, they move in their spaces. So we're, we're going to be encouraging more of that though in the future.
And to me, that, this is just a reflection of this Stop the Violence grantees, like for, for these two. That doesn't speak to the Safe Passage Program that's under Public Safety that has over seventy-one students that are safety ambassadors. And we record their, you know, their academic, um, you know, their, their grades on a regular basis and we provide academic support. And not to mention the work that center that CARES, CARES does, um, when it comes to after school work and academic support. Those aren't reflective in those numbers. Those numbers are just the, the grantees of Stop the Violence. But from the larger ecosystem, you know, we, we're inside the schools doing the work, we're after school doing the work and it, that academic support is happening as well.
Okay. Good. Good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, the other thing I wanted to touch on, well, was girls, right? So I'm glad you just mentioned girls, but you know, that, that these supports are getting to it because our girls really need, need that extra help, right? It isn't, I understand that it often is the, the young men who are in the, you know, directly impacted by the violence in, you know, that they are the victims of. But our girls are certainly, um, part of the ecosystem. I don't know if you have, if you want to speak to. Growth in the area of supporting, whether it's in sports or acad- or whatever it may be. Or outreach toward organizations that are more focused on our girls.
Well, I think that, you know, there is not, um, in, in our ecosystem, we've, we've addressed all, all genders and I don't think we were limited. Even when it came to girls, we have programming for all of them. Um, when we look at, um, New Air Four One Two, we have over four hundred resources. Uh, when we look at, um, New Era Four-One-Two, we have over four hundred resources. And so many of those programs, um, address girls as a focal, and, and some overlap. Whether it's flag football, whether it's after-school, whether it's cheerleading, wherever, wherever it may be. But we do have, we have girls inclusive of that, that number.
And then all the, um, Midget League football programs all have cheerleaders attached to them. So all of them that have, you know, all have, you know.
And some are boys.
And some are boys too. I'm sorry, I can't, uh, yes. So they all have, you know, have, have those things attached to them. Um, and I, I know the work that, uh, Ozenham does up on the hill, you know, have young ladies that participate in, in their programs as well.
Okay, good, good.
I would also like to mention, uh, Councilwoman, and, and Tori just is our data analyst.
Yes.
She just pointed out, the last paragraph, uh, of, of where the pie chart is that we've been speaking of. There are several cohort grantees offered, uh, female cohort curriculums, including Erin Donald Eighty-Ninety-Nine Solutions, Brothers and Sisters Emergency, uh, Kula, Nana Voices Against Violence, Moms Demand Action, Westinghouse Girls Basketball Team, and the YMCA, Y Ladies Health Initiative. So those are focused directly on women as well.
Great, great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. And then the last one, and this is a little bit trickier, and I know this is a little bit broader than what, you know, um, and that is the, um, the sort of larger issue of workforce development. So what, you know, what, um, and I guess I'm curious, just in terms of the app and the data that's being collected. So, and again, I'm, so, um, I have noticed that there are lots of different workforce development opportunities, lots, all across the region. But it is extremely hard to get young people into these programs for a variety of reasons. But, um, uh, even, even just myself, and it's funny, Rick is here, as I've been meaning to contact him. So, I mean, for example, I just toured, um, the Trade Institute of Pittsburgh, uh, and, which is an incredible facility and program. Uh, but I was, I, I've been sort of starting of like, well, how can I get a group of kids, or it doesn't even have to be kids, but from Hazelwood to go and just tour, just tour the facility, right? So just to get a group together. But it's hard. So, how are we, how are we like collaborating to support young people? Whether it be connecting with our eighth and ninth graders to get them, you know, to connect them and get them into the CTE programs at PPS, or whether it's, you know, having contact lists of our seniors so that we are really making sure that all of those opportunities are getting pushed to the, you know, to those folks, so that we really, because that to me seems like a huge challenge, is to actually get, you know, what, whether it be into the CTE programs or then into the.
One thing that we're intentional with, with, um, our Safe Passage Program is that we have a pillar of it called Identities. And within that, every week, um, or as often as we can, we bring in those different agencies to speak to the kids, kind of letting them know about, you know, that particular identity, how it's a career, how they can, you know, kind of, um, profit from it. Um, I know as far as with the, with, uh, one thing we, we did do with our Reach is that they had their own personal referral link for, um, the Trade Institute, right? So that they had a contact person that if you ended up, you know, sending the, the Trade Institute, um, referral to them, it would be a phone number, and they know that it came from Reach, you know, so that they have kind of more of a warm welcome, and you don't fall into the regular bucket of who may, you know, try to apply to the Trade Institute. So, on, on those different pillars, we, we're intentional with trying to introduce our kids to identities that can produce good outcomes, that can be career opportunities. That's, that's, that's one of the pillars that we do with inside the, um, the Safe Passage School Program.
Is there any, um, and, and whether it's sort of within the app or otherwise, to do, I guess, sort of like, um, I mean, I think of when you, you know, like with the, oh, go ahead.
Let me say this. The beauty, um, in, in the whole picture with bringing the app into this, into this whole process is that we have the ability to do anything we want, right? Rather than someone telling you, this is what would you pay for, this is it. So when there's, um, you know, things we want to make adjustments on, we just kind of make them, right? And it just kind of happens. It's, you know, we make, you know, it, within the next twenty-four hours, it, it'll, it'll happen. So if there's some things that you're thinking of that would be beneficial to a system that has over forty, sixty outreach workers that have direct access links to, you know, that sends to people's phone that you think should be on there, all you have to do is make the recommendation, and, and we'll have the adjustment made in the system within the twenty-four hours.
Well, so, I mean, what I'm kind of thinking of is, and I was, sort of comes to mind like with these past campaigns, right? Is that, you know, political campaigns, is if we had the, it's all about the contact information, right? It's about having those contacts. So if we had an active email address and phone number for literally start, you know, for every, every kid, every young person, that we could just be blasting, you know, whether it's a, whether it's the, a, a trade fair at the convention center, or it's a, whatever it is, that we're just blasting that information.
So we have events, we have events that we send out to the kids' phones, to people in the neighborhood, um, that goes directly to their phone. Because the whole thing is that, um, when it comes to outreach work, and it comes to trying to influence kids, right? The one thing that they, that they all have is that their form of communication is their phone.
Yeah.
Right? So we have to be intentional with trying to steal some of that time, in a sense, like, on, on what they do, or kind of what they use their phone for. So from outreach, they're sending, you know, events, videos to their phone. When it comes to the kids, from the school, we're sending events, videos, trying to kind of influence what it is that they're seeing on that phone. Because one thing is that, let, rather, it's like I said, somebody we're trying to influence, um, to change their path, you know, in the community, it's the way that they're, they're communicating is through their phone.
Yeah.
So we're intentional with, from outreach to workers that are inside the school, which you gotta be, you gotta be sending those, those messages to their phone. You gotta be sending those videos to those phones. You gotta be sending those resources that you think may be, be beneficial to those phones. But then also, the system gives us the ability to say whether they accessed it or not. So then it creates a follow-up where the outreach worker or the worker from inside the school can say, listen, I, I sent you this video, can you take a look at it? You know, especially with the kids, because we're paying them. So, we're, we're telling the out, the workers inside the school that when you send a video and they don't access it, let them know they need to access it, because you're not, it's not optional, it's their job to access the video.
Okay, okay, great. Well, maybe later we can talk, because I know that is something that I, that has been a challenge for me, is getting information out to the kids in my district.
If you, if you don't pump good content out or information out, then they can get misinformation. And then before you know it, you know what I mean? So we have to be intentional with, with that, that time that they're using on that phone.
Yeah, and they may not take it today, they may not care, right? They may not care about whatever program is out there today, but maybe in a year they do. Maybe something happens, what, you know, you know, some job goes sideways, and that's the time. So, okay, well, thank you very much. Thanks, uh, congratulations for all this good work.
Can I leave?
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Um, you know, I, I'm a big believer in what you do. David, I was at high schools with you. Cornell, you know, we had a traumatic murder up in Brookline, and we had a post-traumatic team, I guess, came, came out. Is that still part of what you do? Yeah, so if, um, neighbors or kids need a counselor to talk to, we send, and it was really great. Came in vests, you knew who they were, they weren't pushy, they were there to talk to if people wanted to talk to. So, do we do that on just certain cases, or do we always have a post-traumatic team out?
So primarily homicides, but if there is something that happens in our communities, then we have, our, our team will be there, uh, on the scene as, as quickly as possible, but certainly there's some follow-up that, that happens as well. By our Reach Team, by our, our grantees, um, all the people that, that we have talked with today are all hands on deck when those things happen.
And I guess it was a grantee that came out. It was Father, um.
Paul.
Father Paul.
Abernathy.
Neighborhood Resilience Program.
Right, right. So they're one of our contractors, basically.
They are, uh, one, one of our partners. They're with, uh, the county, but they're one of our partners. We collaborate all the time.
Got it, got it. No, I found that extremely helpful, and I think it calmed nerves, and, you know, it was, uh, it was good practice. I'm glad to see, um, my district, well, at least partially my district, Councilwoman Kill Smith and I, Zone Four Commander, is, uh, I'm sorry, Acting Chief, um, seems to be the lowest in numbers. I mean, we compete with Zone, I, I'm sorry, Zone Six. Uh, we compete with Zone Four, I see.
I was getting ready to jump down that.
We're Zone Four. Okay, so, so it looks like we just nudged you out there according to the diagram for this year in violent crimes. But either way, um, I agree with the, with the aspect of, yeah, you put the resources into where you feel you most need them. And I will tell you, I'm impressed with your team, you know. Your people behind your hair, they always come so strong, and I've got to meet a lot of them. They're passionate as to what they do. And, you know, when I see the crime numbers, I'd love to think that the Stop the Violence, uh, funding and what you've put together has an impact on the reduction.
I think that too, Council.
Yeah, right, right. Do, do you agree with that? Acting Chief? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, I, I do believe, and I love your focus on younger generation. We're talking mostly what you focus on is under seventeen years old, correct? Yeah, that's when, again, it really is. I, as I, as I've seen in the school with you, we were with a bunch of at-risk, I guess, students. Uh, I don't know who categorizes them that way, but I guess that's what I was under the understanding. And if I had a hundred of you, David, that would be great, because, you know, he was like, sorry, I can't hear you. You know, he was like, speak up to a couple of the kids, and, you know, it's just that reinforcement and, you know, direction, I feel was very important, um, for them to be heard. So, uh, so, yeah, I, I find it extremely effective. Let me ask you this, as to, what is it, ten million dollars a year in the Stop the Violence Fund that we submit? Yeah. So where are we as far as that goes? Is, you know, money exasperated or not?
It's not.
No, it's not, right, right. That's what I'm saying. Where, where is, where are we at as far as that number goes? Is it, um, do we spend six million? Do we spend two million? Are we gonna, projected to spend all ten?
We're having, uh, discussions about that now, and how we can just further make sure our resources in the, in the right places.
Yeah, right, right. Do you find you need more resources if you had the money?
We all, yes, we would put them to the best use, yes, absolutely.
So we don't have any type of figure like we spent five million this year?
We're, we're working towards it.
Got it, got it, got it. And we have, what have we got, two months left, November, December? We just want to make sure you're not overfunded, you know? I have a feeling, uh, you know, agree with that, eight million, six, oh, okay. Well, you're getting close to your, your limit, so that's good. So I know you work in schools. How is your relationship with the school district? Are they inviting you in? Are they welcoming? Are they open to what you do?
Mister Thompson, and that's a, that's different, Councilman, but Mister Thompson and myself, we meet with PPS, their, uh, superintendents, uh, almost on a weekly basis. We're in, at, at the schools, talking with, with the principals. It's an amazing relationship that the city has with Pittsburgh Public Schools. I, I don't think it's never been this collaborative ever in the history. Uh, and so we're, we're, we're doing well. I, I talk with Dr. Sacco at least once a week. She's with us.
When you say that's different, what do you mean?
Different in that, that we're communicating, di- different in that, again, we have our Safe Passage Program in, in the schools, different in that, that we have people in the schools that, and we have our Reach Team outside the schools. It's just a, it's a great ecosystem.
Yes, go ahead, please.
The difference in that is that, um, the, the Safe Passage Program is not from the trust fund.
That's, so, so that's what you're saying. When you say different, this is not funded by the Stop the Violence Fund.
Right, it's PCCD. So eventually, if the, if the PCCD stuff ends, we would hope that it, it becomes part of the trust fund.
Understood. Who's, who's PCCD?
PCCD, Pennsylvania Crime.
Crime, that was a grant.
So we were a cup, uh, we were a co-recipient with the city, um, to the state for those dollars to do the work we're doing, um, inside the schools right now.
I find that vital. I, I'd hate to see that lost. I, I really believe that's where you curb the violence. I mean, you have to get them at a young age. So you're saying that grant's only viable for the rest of this year, or?
Uh, it should be, uh, end of twenty-twenty-five.
Will they be awarding the grant next year, or?
You'd have to speak with Chief Frank on that, or some, uh, somebody on y'all alone.
We're trying our best to, to make sure that that work continues, so we're, we're working on that as well. How much is that funding? Do you have any idea?
Well, the grant was, uh, was two-point, uh, five for two years. And the, the, the five-hundred thousand the city, uh, kept to keep, to hire two positions within, was, within side of the city.
So we helped in a way of hiring somebody for.
Well, I mean, no, I mean, y'all actually, I was just a sub-recipient, or Operation Better Block, I should say, was a sub-recipient, um, with, uh, the motto, and, you know, we sat down with the city. The city wrote the grant, um, to the state, and, and that's how we received those dollars to do that, the work inside the eight high schools, seven high schools, one middle school.
Mm-hmm. So, if you don't receive that grant next year, then you would be committed to possibly looking at our funds to generate towards that, because you find it also very valuable, very great place to be, right?
Extremely valuable in, in our work. Uh, and, and again, we all been working together. And to your point, we need to reach them in the schools, and that's why we have a, a middle school, because that's the feeder school to, uh, our, our high schools, and our students need the most, uh, attention right now.
That's where violent crime will really come down, I think, if you hit them at a young age and are able to connect with them. And again, you can bring all the data in the world to, to the table for me. I know it helps direct you, and I know it's great in direction in this to, you know, where, where to put your resources. But what I like most about Stop Violence Fund, and the people I see in front of me, I will tell you, and the people I see in the audience there, um, I see a dedicated, professional group of people who are committed to a cause, and, uh, I know that you all are, and I know the people supporting behind you are too. So, um, so that's why I'm a strong supporter of it. I see the impact that you have. So, um, thank you for what you do. And, uh, that's it for me, unless you all wanted to add something.
I have no.
Before going to second round, and Councilwoman Smith, one way to sort of even more directly answer your question about the spending, part of the reason why I wanted to do the post-agenda, to borrow Tali's wording, is that we are, we are in budget season, and so members are always looking to see where we can move dollars around. But to Tali's point, I believe we are where we need to be with this program now, and that this would, is not the appropriate source to try to be pulling dollars away, rather, we need to be continually investing in it. The second point to your question of the spending is Council authorized the first two million that were spent as grants to many of the sub-recipients. I believe it's now time for Council to do that again, to, so that we can continue to build up the capacity of the organizations that we're funding, and that we need to do another round of funding. Um, but I didn't want to authorize that legislation and then have a two-hour or three-hour discussion at the table, but rather demonstrate the need, demonstrate that this has proven to bear fruit, and then move forward with that. So, that's sort of more directly, he says we're in discussion. I want to bring that forward once we get through this.
Thank you.
Second round, Councilwoman Smith.
Yeah, I just want to say, when, hearing his explanation was pretty good, because I was ready to come out, and I'm thinking, I'm gonna rip this place apart today, because I thought they're gonna try to put pressure on me, and I work the opposite when people try to do that to me. So I'm like, ah, you think you're gonna put pressure on me, I'm gonna put pressure on you. So, but I couldn't because of the Reach people doing such a great job, so I could thank them. But anyway, um, but I do want to say to, um, Councilwoman, um, Warwick had mentioned about information for the kids, and you can get all that information from Pittsburgh Public Schools through the, um, lunch program that they have. We, that's how we get it, and that's how we qualify kids all the time for different stuff. Um, but I also want to say, on this Stop the Violence, the twenty-twenty-two grantees by neighborhood, you left a lot of these neighborhoods out that are actually included, because, um, Sister Mary is one of the grants, which I think are Save a Life Today Pittsburgh. They have, um, the Parent Place, and that Parent Place serves all of Allegheny County. And they actually have kids and people from these neighborhoods that I know for a fact. So I just want to say that even though this, this says that they're not included, they actually are.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. So you, you're reaching more people than you think. So, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, um, I want to thank you all for coming to the table. Thank you all who all chose to come down here today. On behalf of the city, we really appreciate the work you all are doing. Um, thank you, thank you very, very much. If there's nothing else, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.